And welcome to our special meeting of council this eleventh day of November. I'd like to call our meeting to order. Everyone can please bow their head for a moment of reflection. Thank you. Need a motion to confirm the agenda. So that the agenda as prepared for November 11, 2025, meaning of council, the township of Perth East being approved as received. By Amanda, second by you, on favor. Carrie, if you have pecuniary interest, you can disclose that now or as the meeting moves along. We have two items on our consent agenda. Is there any questions on any of those items? If not, we have a motion that items five point one, point one to five point one point two is set out on the consent agenda for the November 11, 2025 special media council be received for information. Andrew, second by Jerry, all those in favor, carried. Okay, we have no public presentations, no other presentations and no delegations. We move down to imports, staff reports. Paul, do you want me to just turn it over to you and take her away?
Thank you. Through you, mayor, the before council tonight is the reserve and reserve funds report. Based on the proposed 2026 staff budget. The continuity schedule is included in the report and that'll show the individual balances for the various reserves that are anticipated for the end of 2026. Reserves are proposed to decrease by 2.2 million in 2026. And this is primarily made up of 2025 carry forward projects that amount to 3.5 million. And then included in that is just under 770,000 from the corporate reserves for the Shakespeare arsenic project that will be returned to the corporate reserves. And also attached to the report is the capital summary. So that summarizes the projects proposed in the 2026 staff budget. And their funding, how they're going to be funded, as well as there's a projection for the next four years as well. So we know what to anticipate and kind of prepare for any peaks in requirements from the capital projects. So if there's any questions that we have to answer.
Thank you. Any questions on that? No questions. We have a motion that council of the township of Perth East received a report entitled Reserve and Reserve Funds dated November 11, 2025, prepared by the manager of financial services, dash treasurer for information. Moved by Bob, second by you, all in favor, carried. Okay, and the next item is unfunded capital and long term debt.
So for this report, the unfunded capital is projected to end 2025 at 170,000. And then based on the proposed 2026 staff budget, it's proposed to decrease another 28,000 to 141,000. The long term debt at the end of 2025 is projected at eight hun- or 482,000. And there is the, also the repayment limit for 2020 three is included. The, it's kind of weird because it's based on previous years FIRs. So the numbers, the years look a little skewed on that. So based on that, we have a maximum repayment limit of 3.9 million. And that equates to a maximum of debt between 16 million and 41 million. So there is room for debt if we need to in the future. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? No questions. We have a motion that the council of the township of Perth East received a report entitled unfunded capital and long term debt. F I N D S two zero P five, best 20, eight of November 11, 2025, prepared by the manager of financial services, past treasurer for information. Moved by Jerry, second by Andrew, all those in favor. Okay, so we are going to move through the staff capital budget PowerPoint. So Paul is going to do the PowerPoint. If there's any questions as she moves through the PowerPoint, put your hand up and we'll answer them as we go. This will do it at the end. So Paul, for yours.
Thank you, mayor. So before council tonight is the 2026 staff budget, capital budget draft. And the, to start off, the staff budget premise for the 2026 budget is the 2025 ending capital balances will be transferred to reserves or unfunded capital based on where the projects come in. The 2025 year end surplus or deficit will be transferred to or from corporate reserves pending council direction on how to split that between reserves. There are separate project reports included in the slide here and in the report in the agenda. There have not been reports prepared for regular furniture and fixture items that are just annually adjusted by CPI. And carry forward projects from 2025 have been included within the 2026 staff capital budget draft. There were a few questions submitted since the agenda went out. The first one is, what is the rationale on paving line 47? There is no new asphalt surface roads being added at this time. This is just an overlay of pre-existing asphalt on line 47 between 107 and Lisbon. The next question, why is Broxton Museum showing on the building forecast as we do not own that building? This has been recognized that we don't own it and it was marked as not to be replaced. So there's no annual requirements being set aside for replacement. However, in order to correct this, the asset inventory will be updated at the end of 2025 and the Broxton Museum will be disposed off of our inventory. The final question that came in, what is the minimum target for the municipal drainage reserve? And the ideal at this time, and I will preface this, that the reserve policy will be coming back to council. Looking at those policies, the minimum and maximum targets on each individual reserve at a later date in 2026. But right now, I would say it would be a three-year average of the township drainage assessment cost would be a good minimum target for this reserve. And this would allow us to smooth out those highs and lows of drainage costs being assessed to the township. So those are the questions that came in beforehand. Now, there were some changes since the October 28 staff budget meeting. The first one being, it was referenced at the meeting that the Grand River Conservation Authority budget had come in, the draft 2026 budget. And that resulted in a savings of $944 or brought the after assessment growth levy increased down to a 4.33%. There was an error on my part on the fire department central where the fire protection grant revenue was recorded on the operating side and the expenses are recorded in the capital side. And I didn't do that transfer. So this 48,000 is doing that transfer from the operating to the capital. And that increased the after assessment growth levy increase to 4.76%. The next adjustment was the OMPF funding came in for 2026 and that resulted in additional funding of 110,000 for the township and this decreased the after assessment growth increase to 3.78%. Now, the assessment growth for 2025 has been adjusted downward slightly by $15,000. And this increased the after assessment levy increase to 3.92%. And the final item that came in since the October 28 staff draft budget was the Upper Thames River Conservation Authority 2026 draft budget was received and that was an increased cost of $1,600. Or that changed the after assessment growth levy increase to a 3.93%. So to summarize the staff budget draft number two tonight. The, you can see that the capital projects on this chart have increased by approximately a half a million dollars. However, the reserve transfers are increasing as well by just under $500,000. So we're increasing capital, but we're also using additional reserves. Now on to the general government capital project requests. The first one is our annual computer hardware replacement. And that's in the amount of $24,250 to be funded from the information technology reserve. And that's to replace our annual replacement of staff computers, cell phones, wireless access points, and then various miscellaneous items. The next project is a carry forward from 2025. And this is the updating of the development charges by law in the amount of $40,000. And this is going to be funded from corporate reserves in the amount of 10,000 and then the study development charges for 30,000. The next project is for the Clerks and Finance Department Furniture Fixtures and Small Equipment. It's being proposed to replace two office desks and that the current desks have reached or exceeded their useful lives and with ergonomics and stuff and cable management, we're looking for new desks. That's in the amount of $7,000. We're hoping to purchase together to maybe realize some savings and they'll be funded about 3,600 from corporate asset reserve and 3,400 included from transfers from operating budget. The next project in Min property, the bell structure out front here. It's a carry forward from 2025 project as well. And that's to be funded from the admin property reserve in the amount of $1,500. And we have our information technology general projects for the year. And there it's being proposed for $10,300 funded from the information technology reserve. And this will include the door strike system expansion for the fire halls as well as the offsite vault, a camera system update at the landfill and firewall upgrades to the skating system. So on to protection services. The first item is the fire protection grant, the 48,000 adjustment that I referred to earlier. This is the expenses coming in and it will be completely offset by the grant that we received. And we're not, we don't know exactly how much. This is what we've applied for. So we're hopeful we'll get that full amount. And it'll be funded from the fire protection. Next one is the furniture fixtures, small equipment and hydrants for the various fire stations. And this is in the amount of $1,054,717. And this includes the annual replacement of bunker gear, replacement of miscellaneous small equipment, and then the capital improvements to hydrants. The large ticket item within this, this project is the SCBA replacement. And that's in the amount of $963,000, which half of that was transferred in 2025 to reserves in the amount of 465 to soften the impact to the budget in 2026. So the replacement of the SCBA will occur in 2026. The Shakespeare Station is proposing replacement of the radiant, radiant heaters. And that's in the amount of $15,000 to be funded from the building betterment reserve. This project was identified in the building condition assessment in 2020 and 2021's assessment. Transportation Services Capital Projects. First project here is the replacement of the trackless snow blower attachment and that's in the amount of $25,000. And this amount is a transfer from operating budget to cap. Public Works Triaxle and Tandem Truck Replacements. The triaxle is a carryover from 2025 and that's for the box and plow in the amount of 226,000. And then the replacement of the tandem axle dump truck with snow plow equipment is proposed at 459,000. So the carry forward project will be funded from the public works reserve. And the tandem truck will be funded from a transfer from operating to capital in the amount of 415,000. Now, this is our annual capital allocation for covert replacements in the amount of 28,280. And this is a transfer included in the operating budget to cap. Now, our annual sign replacement allocation for road signs is included in the proposed budget at 14,280, which is also a transfer from operating budget to capital. And now we have our annual crack ceiling projects in the amount of $50,000, which is also a transfer from operating budget to capital. And we have annual allocation of $50,000 for annual sidewalk repairs and replacement. And this is included as an operating transfer to capital. There goes the budget. Need another chair. Now on to Macbeth Street Reconstruction. This is a carry forward from 2025. It's proposed to be a cost sharing agreement with Reeves Heritage Home. And it's reconstruction from William Street to West, to the West Limits. And that's in the amount of 250,000, which is included as a operating transfer to capital. Bridges and culverts. We have Road 116 Boundary Bridge Rehabilitation in the amount of 270,000. And this is a boundary bridge with the Township of Wellesley. It will be split 50/50 with the Township of Wellesley. And it's located on Road 116, just south of Line 61. And that will be funded from the bridge reserve. So the second bridge and cover structure nine on Road 111 is proposed for a replacement. And this is proposed to be funded from the Canada Community Building Fund, the CCBF, or the former federal gas tax funding in the amount of 515,000. It includes curbs and railings and it's on Road 111 between Perth Line 26 and Line 29. So included in the 2026 draft budget is an asphalt overlay of Line 47 in the amount of $400,000, which is an operating transfer to capital. And this is an overlay of the existing paved portion on Line 47 between Perth Road 107 and Lisbon. We also have an asphalt overlay on Road 104 in the amount of 380,000. And this is between, from Lisbon, south, south early, south early, southernly, southerly to personal 43. And that will be funded 79,000 from Public Works Capital Reserve and 300,664 from an operating transfer to capital. We have an asphalt overlay on Road 105, the Willmount Boundary Road in the amount of $60,000 to be funded from an operating transfer to capital. And this is on Road 105 between, between Line 47 and the Waterloo Regional Road 7. This will also include milling and paving of structure 1530 bridge deck is included in this project. Road 106 asphalt overlay in the amount of 22,500 as a transfer from operating to capital. And this is extending northerly from Perth Line 43, 175 meters. Road 122 asphalt overlay of 575,000. And this is proposed to be funded from the Ontario Community Infrastructure Formula Funding, or the OCIF. And this is an asphalt overlay of the three sections between Perth Line 36 and Perth Line 44 for an approximate length of six kilometers. Now we have the King Street in Nethburg asphalt overlay of $115,000. And this is as an operating transfer to capital. And this is on King Street between Line 47 and the Neth River Bridge Crossing. North Hill Drive Road Improvements in the amount of $130,000. This is also a transfer from operating to capital. And this will be the conversion of North Hill Drive between Miller Ave and Stevenson Street to an urban cross section, which will incorporate curb and gutter and an asphalt overlay. So storm sewer projects in the amount of $295,000. And this is the portion, the storm sewer portions on Macbeth Street as the proposed road, as part of the proposed road construction. Onto the waste management and landfill. The project for the landfill is the continuation of the Southeast Hope landfill expansion in the amount of $50,000 to be funded from the landfill asset reserve. Now on to the water wastewater capital projects. We have the continuation of the Shakespeare Water System arsenic treating treatment project. And that's in the amount of $2 million funded from eight, the investing in Canada Infrastructure Program, Greenstring, with the remaining funding to be received of 100, $820,000. And then the remainder will be funded 13,000 from water reserves, 71,000 from Northeast Hope and Southeast Hope gravel pit reserves, 171,000 from fire reserves and 924,000 from corporate reserves. With that, 6, 767,000 to be returned to the corporate reserves from the growth connections. And the other project in Shakespeare Water System is well number two inspection in the amount of $10,000 to be funded from the water reserves and a small portion, just under $600 from the user fees. And this is a downhole video inspection of well number two and it's governed now that video inspections of wells are every 10 years now. The Milverton Water System Water Main Replacement. And this is the replacement of the water main on Macbeth Street as part of that road reconstruction project, which is a carry forward from 2024 budget. This is in the amount of $50,000 to be funded from the water. The Milverton Water System also has a new well proposed in the amount of $450,000 to be funded from the water reserve. This is replacement of well number four and the new well will be located on the Milverton Reservoir Site on Spencer Street. And this is a carry forward from a 2025 budget amendment. The wastewater system is proposed to replace the sewer backhoe. And that's in the amount of $250,000 to be funded mainly from the wastewater reserves, but a small portion from the wastewater user fees at just under $600. And this is replacing a backhoe, a 2011 backhoe. The Milverton Wastewater Collection System Replacement. This is a carry forward from 2024 and this is related to the Macbeth Street Road Reconstruction in the amount of 275,000 to be funded from the wastewater reserves. Milverton Wastewater Collection System, Mill Street West Pumping Station is proposed. This is the continuation of the 2025 Forest Main Twinning Project in the amount of $200,000 to be funded from the wastewater reserves. Shakespeare Wastewater Treatment Facility upgrades in the amount of $30,000 to be funded from the wastewater reserves. And this will be replacement of air diffusers in the sequencing batch reactors and implementing a gas detection system is being proposed in 2026.
Thanks, Paul. You did a great job. For the mayor, for Jake, Macbeth Street project. You don't have to give us the total number now. I'm just curious, the total project. Maybe don't have to do this now. I could add a lot. One number good. With, with that subdivision to the, to the west, that's kind of a hole as far as I know. Is there, what's the main reason? I don't want to get my best freed up. There's any chance it could hold off for another year. I like it. You know, we want to keep things, just curious on those thoughts.
Yeah, through you, mayor. That, all these projects related to Macbeth that are in the budget are only going to occur if the development goes ahead. It's actually going to be completed by the developer, by their contractor. So if it doesn't move forward, then, then these won't go ahead either. But in terms of pushing that, that off, I, I think there's some challenges with Macbeth in its current state with future traffic going into the new subdivision. So there, I think there, there is a necessary upgrade there for Macbeth to, to kind of complement the new subdivision. But it's certainly something we could, could explore. Now, I will say from a servicing side of things, the, the water main is going to have to be tied in there. It needs to be upsized basically from William Street. It's, it's a small bit of a water main there. So that's one of the drivers of getting this all done at once for us to go in and replace the water main and, and try to repair the street and to us, it makes more sense to do it all at once.
So the final project for the water wastewater section is the Shakespeare Wastewater Collection System Info and Infiltration Study, the INI study. And that's a carry forward from the 2025 budget in the amount of $100,000 to be funded from wastewater development charges reserve. Onto the Health Services Cemeteries. We have our annual $15,000 for realignment of tombstones and monuments. And this year continues, 2026 is proposed to continue in Mornington Evangelical Cemetery. And that's proposed to be funded from the corporate reserves. Recreation and Culture Capital Projects, the Perk Facility Exterior Painting in the amount of sixty-eight thousand dollars to be funded, forty-five hundred dollars from the Perk Capital Reserve. And the remainder sixty-three thousand will be a transfer from operating to capital. This will include painting of all siding, eaves, and fascia of the perk site as the exterior showing sun damage fading and starting to show its age. Banquet Hall Grease Trap Replacement in the amount of fifty-seven hundred and fifty dollars to be funded from an operating transfer to capital. And this is replacement of the existing grease traps in the banquet hall kitchen. At the pool, we have proposed solar blanket replacement in the amount of three thousand dollars. This is a transfer from operating to capital, and it will replace the two thermal pool covers. The pool also is proposing to replace the heaters in the amount of twelve thousand dollars. This will be funded from an operating transfer to capital, and there's two heaters being replaced. So that gets us through the capital project summaries. And then the levy information for the twenty twenty-six staff budget draft number two with, including the changes from the October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five meeting. We're at a five point three-three percent levy increase or a five hundred and ninety-seven thousand four fifty-one dollar levy increase. When we take into account the assessment growth, that brings us down to a three point nine-three percent levy increase or a four hundred and forty thousand seven hundred and ninety-nine dollar increase. The twenty twenty-six assessment role will, is anticipated to be received in early December. And at that time, the twenty twenty-six tax rates can be calculated. The county and education rates have not been released or passed as of yet. We're still waiting on OPP costs for twenty twenty-six as well as the Maitland Valley Conservation Authority budget for twenty twenty-six. So the levy change at a glance. Federal, provincial, and external changes amount to three hundred and seven thousand dollars or a two point seven-five percent of the overall levy increase. Changes related to municipal township controlled changes relates to a two hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollar increase or a two point five-eight percent increase for the total levy increase of the five point three-three percent. Now on a tax bill for a hundred thousand dollar assessment compared to last year's taxes, a residential tax bill per hundred thousand dollars will go up twenty-eight sixty-one. For farmland, it'll go up seven dollars and fifteen cents, commercial thirty-five dollars and sixty-seven cents, and industrial fifty-six thirty-three. So the tax dollars raised on a hundred thousand of property assessment per class. So a residential property assessment of a hundred thousand dollars raises five hundred and sixty-seven dollars for Perth East. Farmland will raise a hundred and forty-two dollars. Commercial seven hundred and seven, and industrial one thousand one hundred and seventeen thousand. So now on to the impacts of the various typical assessments. Now I will, uh, do a disclaimer that this is based on twenty twenty-five assessments as the twenty twenty-six assessments aren't available yet. So it's just comparing, uh, for the same assessment, there's no assessment growth or change there until we receive that assessment rule. So a typical single-family home, the average assessment is three hundred and twenty-one thousand in twenty twenty-five. And the change would be ninety-two dollars to the tax bill or the five point three-three percent, or the weekly effect would be a dollar seventy-seven. For a typical standard industrial property, the average assessment is four hundred and fifty-six thousand in twenty twenty-five. So the proposed increase in the twenty twenty-six draft, staff draft budget would be two hundred and fifty-eight dollars to an industrial bill or the five point three-three percent or a weekly effect of just under five dollars. For a typical farmhouse, the average assessment is a hundred and ninety-three thousand one hundred in twenty twenty-five. And that would result in a fifty-five dollar increase for twenty twenty-six as the proposed staff budget is now. And that is the five point three-three percent increase or a dollar seven weekly impact. So on typical farmland in Perth East, the twenty twenty-five average assessment is one point five million. And the increase would be a hundred and ten dollars or the five point three-three percent or a weekly impact of two dollars and eleven cents. A typical small retail commercial property in Perth East in twenty twenty-five, the average assessment was two hundred and two thousand. And with the proposed budget for twenty twenty-six, there'd be a seventy-two dollar increase on the bill or a five point three-three percent or the weekly increase of one point three nine. So the benefits to the taxpayers for the township tax dollars. You get the various services here, emergency services twenty-four seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a week, a year. And there's three fire stations, there's approximately five hundred and fifty kilometers of road, twenty-one kilometers of sidewalk, forty-three bridges and sixty-three culverts, as well as animal control, property standards, bylaw control, streetlights, outdoor swimming pool. You can read the rest of the list. Uh, the township property tax comparison to annual household expenses. So the twenty twenty-six proposed staff budget would raise a thousand eight hundred and twenty per prop residential assessment. And that compares to, uh, the basic internet of a thousand sixteen. And there's employment insurance payments of just under a thousand and basic cellphone plan, six hundred and seventy-eight dollars. So it just compares the value that you're getting for the, your taxpayer, your tax dollars that are going to Perth East compared to your annual household expenses. That brings us to the end, and I just want to thank all the managers and staff for their input and contribution to the twenty twenty-six staff budget process. Uh, I know the timelines were tight with the changes for the budgeting software as well as the changes for the Strong Mayor's timelines. And I appreciate your help and contribution. If there's any questions, if they have to.
Okay, thanks Paula, any questions Bob?
Yeah, through the mirror, I'll try to answer those. The landfill, uh, I wish I knew the answer as to when we were going to get approval. Um, it's been, been a long road to this point. Um, but we do have the design prepared, we're essentially waiting on approval. For the archaeological study at this point, so that's been, been the roadblock, so to speak. But in terms of extended life, obviously that's gonna, you know, gonna vary depending on what we bring in. Uh, but it's ten years approximate, um, as kind of a minimum for that. Beyond that, there is additional lands to the south at that landfill that we, that we could explore expansion into, what that looks like, uh, I'm not entirely sure. But my understanding is a lot more rigorous environmental screening process, that sort of thing. Was there any other questions I missed there?
I guess I'm just concerned the timelines to get approvals, it's not easy. There's a lot of factors involved. Councils and industry, but it's concerning to me. There's some concerns as well. So again, with the, uh, cemeteries, we're earmarking some dollars for maintenance or aligning, I think, as well in the budget. As we take on more cemeteries, or they get downloaded to us, we're going to have more costs associated with this. And I guess I'm just concerned that so that, back to here, and I'm not entirely part of the cemetery, just banning even giving them to township. It'd be nice if they gave us ones, but the existing ones that are operating, yes, they do have funds, but instead of just no records and no money, but that's, that's a problem. No, you don't want to answer, it's just, I would like seeing something explored in that regard because it's going to become constant. And, uh, lastly, I, I appreciate the work of paving in a certain area. It expressed my concerns with paving the King Street, yeah, for, just because it's not doing. Uh, don't disagree, it needs to be done, but
Okay, thanks Bob, anyone else? Nope, okay, we do have a series of motions. So this one is for item seven point two point one to seven point four point three, as said, you have me wrong. Sorry, okay, so this is for the staff budget executive summary. Uh, staff budget category level and staff budget detail. So that item seven point two point one to seven point two point three is set out in the staff capital budget PowerPoint for the November eleventh, twenty twenty-five special meeting of council be received for information. Move by Hugh, second by Amanda, all in favor. Carrie, and this is, uh, for the corporate computer hardware and annual replacement. The development charges by law, fifty-nine dash twenty twenty-one update, the office desk replacement and other office desk replacement and IT general projects. So that item seven point three point one point one to seven point three point one point five is set out in the general government capital projects be received for information. Moved by Jerry, second by Andrew, all in favor. Carrie, the next one is Fire Department, Fire Prevention Grant Project. The hydrants, the furniture fixtures and small equipment, the bunker gear. And then we have, uh, each of the three stations, furniture fixtures, small equipment and a radiant heater replacement, so that items seven point three point two point one to seven point three point two point eight set out in the Protection Services Department projects be received for information. Need to move into seconders, move by Hugh, second by Bob, all in favor. Carrie. Now this is seven point three. Uh, and this one was, uh, general government, so. Right, sorry, transportation, so it's other equipments, snowblower attachment, traxxer replacement, tandem truck with snow pile equipment, culvert signs, crack ceiling sidewalks, Macbeth Street Boundary Bridge on road one sixteen, structure nine, line forty-seven, road one oh four, one oh five, one oh six, road one twenty-two, King Street, North Hill Drive, and Storm Sewer on Macbeth Street. So that items three point three point one to three points, or seven, excuse me, item seven point three point three point one to seven point three point three point eighteen is set out in Transportation Services Capital Projects we receive for information. Moved by Andrew, second by Hugh, all in favor. Carrie, and this one is landfill expansion, so that item seven point three point four point one is set out in the Environmental Waste Services Capital Project being received for information. Moved by Bob, second by Amanda, all in favor. Carrie. We're at seven point three point five, this is Environment Water Services. And that's a Shakespeare arsenic project continuation, well number two, video inspection. And then Milverton Water Main Installation, Macbeth Street, and the new well construction. So that items seven point three point five point one to seven point three point five point four is set out in the Environment Water Services Capital Project be received for information. Move by Hugh, second by Jerry, all in favor. Carrie. Okay, now we're at, uh, wastewater services, so the Milverton Wastewater Collection System Installation on Macbeth Street, the, uh, Mill Street West Pumping Station, the wastewater system backhoe replacement, and Shakespeare, it's the W W T P improvement and the I N I study. So now we have items seven point three point six point one to seven point three point six point five is set out in the Environment Wastewater Services Capital Project be received for information. Move by Bob, second by Hugh, all in favor. Carrie. Okay, we're at the Health and Culture Services. And this is the Mornington Evangelical Cemetery Tombstone and Monument realign so that item seven point three point seven point one is set out in the Health and Culture Services Capital Project be received for information. Moved by Andrew, second by Hugh, all in favor. Carrie, we're at Recreation and Culture. So the perk, the facility exterior painting, the banquet hall kitchen grease trap replacement, and the pool solar blanket, blanket replacement and heater replacements for the pool. So we have items seven point three point eight point one to seven point three point eight point four is set out in the Recreation and Culture Services Capital Projects be received for information. With Jerry, second by Jeremy, all in favor. Carrie, and we're going back to Paula for capital forecast reports.
Through the mayor, included in the package is the capital forecast for the various areas. And, uh, if there's any questions from council, I'd be happy to answer them. There is that one noted at the beginning of the meeting, the Brockston Museum that will be disposed of in twenty twenty-five as a correction error. Okay, any questions on that?
Okay, if not, then we're going to move to the next one, which is Perth East Recreation Capital Forecast. You want to report on them all, or do you want to just ask if council has any questions on them all?
I don't have any other comments on those, but if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Okay, so any questions on any of those forecasts and under item seven point four? If not, we'll move to the motion, so we have, um, the building forecast, the Perth East Recreation Capital Forecast, Library Capital Forecast, Fire Vehicle Forecast, Building and Planning Department Vehicle Forecast, Five Year Roads Capital Forecast, Bridges and Culverts Forecast, Public Works Vehicle and Equipment Forecast, Public Works Sidewalk Forecast, and the Water and Wastewater Vehicle and Equipment Forecast. The motion is that item seven point four point one to seven point four point ten is set out in a capital forecast report be received for information. We need a move in the secondary, moved by Amanda, second by Jeremy, all in favor. We need a move in the secondary, moved by Amanda, second by Jeremy, all in favor, yes. Okay, that's it, thanks Paula, great job. We're moving, okay, we do not have any correspondence, do we have any notice of motions? Any other business? Any announcements? We do not have a closed session, so we are to the confirmatory bylaw. And it reads that the bylaw fifty-four dash two zero two five being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the council, the township of Perth East, a special meeting held on November eleventh, twenty twenty-five. We read it first, second and third. Secondaire, moved by Amanda, second by Bob, all in favor, carried. And the last motion of the night that the meeting be adjourned at seven fifteen. Moved by Amanda, second by Jeremy, all in favor. Thanks everyone, enjoy the rest of your evening.